I'll go ahead and call to order this regular meeting of the Nelson County School Board on Tuesday, May 15th, 2018 at approximately 5:01 PM. First thing we'll do is the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance). 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 (Pledge of Allegiance).
So, the Board Mission Statement. The Nelson County Board of Education is representative of our citizens and entrusted with their children, pledges to support the mission of the Nelson County School District by setting visionary direction through effective policy, oversight, and efficient resource management. The District Vision Statement, quality education now, learning for life. Item two on the agenda, any changes to the agenda other than the executive session piece there?
No, we can be in executive session after good news.
Okay, so then let's go on into that then. Item number three, 3A, is student shareholder engagement, the district art contest winners.
We may be minus one or two of our award winners, but we'll go ahead and roll through and honor their pieces anyway. I don't want to keep you all too terribly long, but I just want to brag on all of the submissions. If you guys have kids in any of these schools that submitted artwork, that were even chosen to that level, it is really... My four judges that we assemble every year, I put together a panel of three different arts professionals every year, and they just want to crucify me because it's so hard to pick. I mean, every grade level, they can put together a whole calendar just at that level. You know what I mean? Just the senior class alone would be a breathtaking calendar, and you'll see some of these gorgeous images here in a second. So, I just want to show my appreciation for all the people that have supported this contest. This is our sixth year doing it, and it really, I think it produces quite a really nice product. So, we're going to go oldest to youngest roughly this year, but we're going to start with the cover, and it's an artist from Nelson County. Her piece is just a stunning value-studying graphite, and that is by Cassidy Keeling.[185.62][185.62](Applause). How did it switch? Oh, there we go. This is a student of mine. I'm not positive it's out here because I'm looking at Grace and guessing it's not, but this is one of my senior students, and I'll make his ears burn anyway and brag on him a little because he's really pursued ceramics and has just done a fantastic job in pursuing an art form that's very, very difficult. And I'm tickled that they chose him. His pieces are really, really strong, and his name is Austin Traxler. The next student is, I believe is out here, I see her face peeking around the corner, and her work is... I have to brag on her and embarrass her because sometimes she doesn't want these accolades, but there isn't a kid in our building who is more gifted and more industrious than this one. So, I'm really honored and happy for her. That gorgeous piece there of the woman and the flower, the woman with the flowers in her hair is by Grace Krebs.[251.62][251.62](Applause). This is the very first piece that I opened when the artwork came over from Nelson County, and I have to brag on Diana a little bit. I'm always very humbled and sort of discouraged when I feel like we're having a pretty good shot in this thing, and then I opened Diana's box, and I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, we're being killed." So, I'm really flattered that I got two pages of the calendar because she always kind of kicks my butt at this contest and every contest. So, this is a really beautiful piece by Margaret Filiatru.[286.83][286.83](Applause). This next young lady is a repeat winner that made it in once as a middle schooler. As an eighth grader, she won last year, and is back in now as a freshman in Nelson County. Her stuff is just, you can see, super realistic, just really, really talented and wonderful art students, Caroline Hayden.[311.12][311.12](Applause). The next couple of pieces are from middle schools. Mr. Peyton mentioned that he didn't think this student was going to be able to come. I'm not sure. This is a student from New Haven, and her name is Holly Anderson. The next kid from middle schools is from Bloomfield. Is that Miss Nikki out there? Her piece is just super charming and fun, and my judges really, like, they always talk about how the middle school pieces look like. They just speak middle school, you know, with anime eyes, and quirky, and we get such a kick out of all the grade levels. This is Nikki Russell.[347.12][347.12](Applause). This next piece is a really dynamite little painting. It's actually on canvas and just a fantastic nightscape there, and that is Emma Miles from And I have to brag a little on this school in particular. There's not a clean slate of winners ever before in the history of this contest. It's top to bottom, a school just clean house, the way that it happened this year, but every winner from here on is from Bloomfield Elementary School, and I think it really speaks volumes.[384.22][384.22](Applause). This gorgeous piece here is by the fifth grader Yasmin Narve. The fourth grade piece is coming up, and it is a really, just another fantastic charming little winter scene, and just, these things just... And I opened Bloomfield's boxes too, it's like, "Oh, my gosh," I mean, they're just top to bottom, and you can make a whole calendar. You can make 10 calendars just out of what they submit, really. That's Addie Avis.[414.47][414.47](Applause). And then our winner for the third grade is Camilla Lusko, her little farm scene here.[426.72][426.72](Applause). And in the second grade, this combination of watercolor crayons, super vibrant. I mean, the slides don't even do these justice to you all, they just jump off the page, and that is Gavin Thomas.[443.47][443.47](Applause). And then our K-1 piece is just fantastic. If you all get a chance to look at these prints out in the lobby, they're really wonderful. That is Kennedy Brown.[458.12][458.12](Applause). Congratulations to all of our winners. You guys, your awards are out in the easels out in the lobby, and we want to... And thank you all for the support that you guys provide for our arts community.[471.12][471.12](Applause). Yeah, I want to embarrass this guy. This is Austin Traxler, a teapot maker.[498.12][498.12](Applause).
Austin, just in case anybody blinks, I want you to do it. Great. (Applause). We'll give a few minutes to allow if there's any parents that you want to go out there and kind of give the hug and be with your child, and maybe if you all, you're welcome to stay, but if you all also had other things that you needed to get to tonight, that's completely understandable. So, going on into item 3B, the good news. Do we have a good news reader today?
So, we've been working on a short video for teacher appreciation from students and teachers from our district to share with you that will be followed by a cease and end by our technology synergy channel.
(Music).
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 Isaiah, how do you know this crow cares about you?
She takes time to, well, take things apart and do it in delivery.
And what do you love about this crow?
She takes time of her day to show me where the stuff is on top and where to do it.
When do you know Miss Anne and the cafeteria staff care about you?
Because she works and she gives money to eat every day and makes sure that we're good and we're just not hungry every day.
And what do you love about Miss Anne and the cafeteria staff?
I love that she's super nice.
Okay, so, Mary Ann, and can you tell me a little about Mr. Hans and how he helps you?
Mr. Hans helps me because when I was young, I worked with him a lot, and now that I'm older, I need to help the kids with him a lot.
And what does he do?
He helps kids understand math and teaches them a way to understand math from a way that they can.
And if there was anything you could tell him, what would it be?
You are one of the best teachers ever, and thank you so much for helping me and helping the kids.
So, whether I'm a teacher of appreciation, so that's what I appreciate about my department. And what do you hope this stuff comes to help us? This stuff appears a lot and certainly a hurt, but upset, sad or angry. This stuff is so caring, this stuff is so understanding, and brought me...
(Music).
So, Miss Filiatru, how do you know the teachers at Constance Create care about their students?
I know the teachers at Constance Create care about their students because they're flexible and that you got a great taste to make things happen for students. They make sure that learning is fun for students.
And they love to learn, too.
And they love to learn. And they make sure that they make it happen here for their kids and that they make learning fun and action for their kids.
What do you love about the teachers here?
I love that they're family, that they're loyal to each other, that they're loyal to their job and to their kids, and they make this a great place to work.
It's a great place.
Thank you for all you do.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so we have several groups to recognize tonight, one of them being our Student Technology Leadership Program students. STLP is designed to highlight the passion of technology within our students across the state. Our district actually had 10 schools participate this year, which is up quite a bit, and tonight we're going to be recognizing those who placed at State. And so, we're going to first start with Cody Arnold from Nelson County High School.[824.12][824.12](Applause). So, Cody is an STLP engineer, and he had to interview for this position. He got a chance to go work with an awesome team of about 19 other kids from around the state of Kentucky, and he had the chance to go to KISTI, our Kentucky Technology Conference, and will get a chance to go to Chicago in the summer for our International Technology Conference. And then we're going to have Mr. Cantrell come up. And STLP at Nelson County High School is actually run by Jessica Sparrow, but she has a little one graduating from the ELC tonight, so she couldn't be here.
Okay. Charlie Cantrell, teaching information technology at the Nelson County T.C. I think most of you see me around. The first one I have is Sanel Kerchik. Real proud of Sanel, he's a junior, and a Thomas Dulce student comes to us in the afternoon this year. Last year, he had me in the morning. He's a junior, he's already working for Barstown Cable, and so he works there during the evening, not as a co-op student, but hopefully next year we'll have him as a co-op student during the day. So, if you call Barstown Cable, you may very well be talking to Sanel, so real proud of him. The next student is Caitlin Wilson. She's one of my seniors. She was one of my right-hand people there in the classroom because if we couldn't solve a problem with information technology, we were working with a type of computer called Raspberry Pi, and anytime Caitlin and her cohort, Sophia, if we ran into a problem with it, they got figured out and knocked out. Bless her heart, she just finished with AP testing, and she was ready to go home, and she had family obligations, so these kids, they get under a lot of pressure, so that's why she's out here with us tonight. And then the next is Sophia Abraham. Actually, the thing I forgot to mention about Caitlin and Sophia, they both got recognized by the National Center for Women's Information Technology, which is really cool. They only pick so many people, so really proud of both of them. Sophia's the next one, and she also is the NCWIT, and she's also right there with the high technology and so forth, really proud of her. I might mention, they're both attending UK together for computer sciences, and they're going to be rooming together and studying computer science together, so they're like, you know, the Wonder Twins, so.
Thank you for all you do.[972.12][972.12](Applause). The STLP coordinator for Thomas Nelson is Miss Jill Mattingly, so she will introduce her kids.
So, we had a great year. Our first one is Wesley Gilpin, and he won for his anti-bullying video that was sponsored by Murray State. The project is, it's a Kate product, is what the competition is called, but his anti-bullying video won first place at State. He's not here with us this evening. GSE Pitch Fest is the Governor's School for Entrepreneurs. Macy Knoll, Chloe Dow, Jacob Fields, and Sidney Judd actually presented on the main stage of Rubberina their S-Stack idea, and they all won scholarships to the Governor's School for Entrepreneurs this summer and will be attending.[1030.12][1030.12](Applause). Sebastian Downs, he went to CertaPalooza for STLP and scored the highest out of the state in the PowerPoint competition.[1047.12][1047.12](Applause). Joshua Skaggs, he interviewed at the regional competition for a spot on the STLP production team, and so at State, he was there with the film crew and was learning to use some great production equipment with a real team, a real production team from a studio that was there teaching the students and letting them film the competition and putting packages together and things that would be posted online for STLP. So, that's a picture of him there doing his work. And then lastly, Spiro Hero, Joseph Roberts, David Vincent, Noah Fields, and Ethan Lamar worked on this project, and they had to write a script, create an obstacle course, and then program a Spiro to drive through that obstacle course and take it to the competition and successfully have the Spiro drive through it as well, so.[1111.12][1111.12](Applause).
Thank you all for all your hard work this year.
Turn around real quick. Jeff, the boss, he's got it. I'll text you a little bit later. I'll drop out Kobe Phil.
I'm glad I'm not over there.
You know, the thing about that too, Mission Al, you mentioned what STLP stands for, Student Technology Leadership Program.
Right.
I mean, to me, and this is something that's out of the office that I work at there in Frankfurt, the L is probably the most important part of that. And, you know, the technology is the way to get that book, but the leadership piece of it, I mean, we've seen that with these students here, with, you know, people like Cody or in years past, Claire Posey, Chandler Young, I mean, some of the former students who have graduated or gone on to Gannon Academy, and what they've been able to do and achieve is just amazing. So, that L, a lot of times, to me, is the bigger part of that whole program.
Yes, I agree, and we have some great students. They're learning young right now, so that's awesome. So, next, I have some Google certification awards to give out, and I'm super excited about these fine ladies. So, we're first going to, let's see, Renee said she was going to be here for like the... Oh, there she is, oh, good. Yay, I caught you. All right, come on up, girlie. So, Renee is from Nelson County High School, and she received her Level 2 certification.[1204.12][1204.12](Applause). Miss Brooke Dunn comes from Nelson County High School as well, and she is receiving, or she has received her Level 1 certification.[1219.12][1219.12](Applause). And Miss Lisa Bartley is coming to us from Bloomfield Middle, Assistant Principal, so that's awesome to have a Google certified admin. So, there you go, she is receiving her Level 1 certification.[1238.12][1238.12](Applause). Thank you guys so much for all you've done and for our kids. Yeah. So, normally, this is the time where I sit down, however, we have one more group that honestly have been like my tribe of people this year, and that's our NCS Ignites group. They have been, they've gone above and beyond. There are 16 of them, some of them were able to make it tonight. So, they, our mission as NCS Ignites was to inspire, innovate, and implement. And so, tonight, they're going to be receiving railroad spikes and keys. The railroad spike represents the hard work of the individual, and then the key signifies the opportunity to open doors. So, let me grab their stuff, and we'll get started. So, Miss Leah Harden. It's Leah Harden, if you'd like.[1303.12][1303.12](Applause). Yes, if you don't mind, here's your key. Uh-huh. And then we have Miss Martina Amshoff.[1317.12][1317.12](Applause). I'm getting your key, absolutely. Miss Amber Godie.[1328.12][1328.12](Applause). I love my central office people. There you go, baby girl. Yep. Miss Brittany Hahn.[1341.12][1341.12](Applause). There you go, sweet girl. Absolutely. Miss Amy Hurst.[1351.12][1351.12](Applause). There you go, babe. Congratulations. Miss Jennifer Lofton.[1361.12][1361.12](Applause). Look at you, look at that smile. Loves. Miss Jill Mattingly.[1370.12][1370.12](Applause). And last but not least, Miss Donna McGee.[1378.12][1378.12](Applause). So, here you go, congratulations. So, these were our NCS, some of them are NCS Ignites cohort that spent about 14 hours with me after school, so learning me with some great stuff and implementing some great things in their classrooms. So, thank you.[1404.12][1404.12](Applause).
Thank you to you that are a member of that NCS Ignites group, as well as yourself or leading. I mean, you all are the innovators within our district that are really going to be setting that stage and setting that bar for other folks, and we appreciate what you all do every day, especially that big smile on Miss Lofton. Moving on to item number four on the agenda, there is a request to convene an executive session for KRS 61.810-1 sub-C to discuss proposed litigation. I would need a motion to do that. Motion by Mr. Dickerson. Second by Ms. Dye. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We'll take a short moment to go into executive session. So, we'll need a motion to reconvene open session. Motion by Ms. Frieden. Second by Mr. Dickerson. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. There was no action taken during the executive session. We'll now move on to the rest of the agenda, item six, Operations Consent Agenda. This consists of information, personnel actions, treasurer's report, bills and claims, munis report, leave of absence, minutes from previous meeting, board training approval, and the certified evaluation plan update. All of these were part of our board packet that we received access to towards the end of last week. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda? Motion. Motion by Ms. Berry. Second. Second by Ms. Dye. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on into item number seven, the Efficient Resource Management 7A, the nursing contract. Looks like Mr. Leathers.
Good evening, everybody. How are you all tonight? Last meeting, we had the working session, Tom, Ms. Hopper and myself were here, and we talked about the Cumberland Family Medical Center contract, and Ms. Hopper talked to you guys a lot and had a lot of questions, and I think she answered most everything you had. Basically, the point of this is to make a recommendation to you to better support students and students, our students and staff with nursing services. We'd like to proceed to enter into a contract with Cumberland Family Medical Center Incorporated, or CFMC. The contract would need to be reviewed and signed by the Nelson County Board and Cumberland Family Medical Center each and every year, so it's an annual contract. And then, like I said, my recommendation is that I ask that you move to approve the contract that was discussed at the working session.
So, to kind of recap where we got to this point, I know, I think back in the fall, Mr. Brown, whenever he was serving as the interim superintendent, had brought to the recommendation, we all thoroughly agreed with, that we needed to make sure that we had nursing services in all of our schools. And so, himself, you, probably a couple other staff in the district worked together to bring onboard additional nursing staff so that we had them at every school except one where they shared between a couple buildings.
Two schools, Bloomfield Elementary, Bloomfield Middle, and also Academy Rise, that's shared with Oklahoma Kentucky. So we'll need a motion to reconvene an open session.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Breeding.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. There was no action taken during the executive session. We'll now move on to the rest of the agenda, item six, Operations Consent Agenda. This consists of information, personnel actions, Treasurers Report, Bills and Claims, Munis Report, Leagues of Absence, Minutes from Previous Meeting, Board Training Approval, and the Certified Evaluation Plan Update. All of these were part of our board packet that we received access to towards the end of last week. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Berry.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Moving on into item number seven, the Efficient Resource Management 7A, the nursing contract. Looks like Mr. Leders.
Good evening, everybody. How are y'all doing? Last meeting, we had the working session, Tom, Miss Hopper and myself were here, and we talked about the Cumberland Family Medical Center contract, and she, Miss Hopper, talked to you guys a lot, and had a lot of questions, and I think she answered most everything you had. Basically, the point of this is to make a recommendation to you to better support students and students, our students and staff with nursing services. We'd like proceed to enter into a contract with Cumberland Family Medical Center Incorporated, or CFMC. The contract would need to be reviewed and signed by the Nelson County Board and Cumberland Family Medical Center each and every year. So it's an annual contract. And then, like I said, my recommendation is that I ask that you move to approve the contract that was discussed at the working session.
So to kind of recap where we got to this point, I know, I think back in the fall, Mr. Brown, whenever he was serving as the interim superintendent, had brought to the recommendation, we all thoroughly agreed with, that we needed to make sure that we had nursing services in all of our schools. And so himself, you, probably a couple of other staff in the district worked together to bring onboard additional nursing staff, so that we had them at every school except one where they shared between a couple of buildings.
Two schools, Bloomfield Elementary, Bloomfield Middle, and also Academy Rise, that's shared with Oklahoma Kentucky.
Okay.
Just distance.
Proximity, yeah.
Nine nurses, eleven buildings.
And of course, all along, our long-term goal was to be able to provide those services to students, to where also there could be, if needed, Medicaid billing. And at that time, I think, and it may be a Mr. Hawkinsmith question, or you may remember Mr. Leders, I think back in the latter, toward the end of the calendar year, we had two entities that approached us whenever we put out a request for proposals.
It was December.
In December, and it was Lincoln Trail Health District and Cumberland.
Cumberland Medical.
The one that we're talking about here.
Two all areas that we could look at.
And I think at that time, whenever we compared these and had a lot of talk about them, Lincoln Trail Health District seemed to be the preferred approach, preferred way to go. Of course, they also provided services to Hardin County, I think Marion, Washington, LaRue.
Hardin, LaRue, Marion.
Marion, okay. And had been doing that for quite some time. Fast forward a couple more months, which would have been probably about end of March, sometime around there, we discovered that Lincoln Trail Health was pulling out of all of those types of contracts with all school districts.
Yes, we originally had, you had approved a contract with Lincoln Trail District Health Department for the last quarter of the year, so we could start the training and then gear up for a new contract for the new year.
And for people that are here in the audience, something that, not to get too deep into the weeds, but to be able to do the Medicaid billing, they do have to be an authorized billing entity, which as a school district, we're not.
That's right.
And however, both of these that had proposals were, so we go with Lincoln Trail, but then in that March timeframe, we discovered they've pulled out of all their contracts. So we went back to what would have been the second choice, started having more conversations with them, meaning Cumberland Family Medical Center.
Family Medical Center.
And I believe that prior to the work session last week, that Miss Hopper or other folks in their group, along with yourself and whomever else, maybe even Mr. Mckay as board attorney, had looked at some of the contract terms, or Mr. Hawkinsmith had, to make sure that there was nothing that was unsuspected, that it was something that could be, and I think I heard you say, just year to year, and not something that was long-term.
That's correct, it's a yearly contract, there's also Mr., I think, I'll get it, Chip.
I do.
So Chip reviewed it, the standard contract, is what they supply to all the other school districts that they do business with as well.
And I went through all that again, just to kind of set up the timeline of where we were approximately nine, 10 months ago, what we were trying to accomplish for our students, which was to be able to provide them better medical services in school. We all know that any opportunity where students lose the ability to be in school, that's lost instructional time that we can never get back. That doesn't mean that we're wanting children that are sick, injured, or whatever be sent in the classroom, but we also know that if there are simple things that can be treated within that school building, that it allows that student to reengage back into that classroom and that learning environment that much quicker. And so now, we've gotten to this point here. We had some discussion at the board meeting, I don't know if there were some other things that, questions or discussion to bring up?
I have another question regarding, just to be clear, so we put out an RFP, and only two parties respond.
There's only a couple of parties that you can go to, simply because of what is required. The health departments can be certified through the state as a health department. A separate entity could apply for federal approval. So there's a process that they would go through and receive federal approval to do this. So we went to several other local entities, for example, Hardin County went to Hardin Memorial, tried to get them, because they were desperately looking for a replacement. We tried physicians to children, we also tried Ladasha, which is a Kentucky Health One, and basically, they didn't have a federal approval to do this. It's not saying that they can't do this, it's not saying that they can't do, come back to us at a later point and offer that service, but at this point, there was only a couple of services that we could have gone to.
And so this is year one, this gets us rolling, and then?
That's correct.
That's what I'm making sure.
And also, I mean, just because they would be assisting with providing those, I'll call them nursing services, it's probably not the appropriate phrase to use. If my son becomes sick, doesn't necessarily mean that I have to use their services. I mean, I could still say, I'll be there in 30 minutes, stay in the office, I'll check you out, we'll head over here to, you know, Family Medical Center, where he goes.
That's correct.
So any parent or guardian still has that option, whatever the service being, that they could go to whatever their own provider is if they wanted to, or if they wanted to take advantage of this, to be able to make it more immediate care for their child, that they'd be able to take advantage of this service in that school building.
Yes, they'd have, they'd have to sign a consent release of information, basically, that will allow them to do that. If they don't want to do that, they don't have to do that, even if they've signed it, they can ask the parent, the parent can still say, I don't want to, I'd rather come and pick them up, or please do that for me. It keeps them from having to leave work necessarily, take off work and miss work when something can be done right there.
Right. So my concern there is, you know, it's always, you know, back to the community, and if, I don't want to see our local businesses, our local providers have to suffer or see an impact by what we're trying to do here. You know, we don't know what that looks like, we don't know what that's gonna be. I think this is a great thing, I think this is going to provide that extra, that higher level of service to our students, so I think this is a great thing. But what I would like to see over the course of the next year is reaching out, and we've got a position, you know, that's gonna be focused in this area, I would like to see this position reach out, again, to our local providers to say, hey, is this something you would be interested in, in doing? You know, because I would much rather see, if we're gonna be billing and if we're gonna be charging, not us, if they're gonna be charging, you know, copays, and they're gonna be filing insurance and things like that, just like they would if they were to go to the doctor, I would like to see those monies go back into the community versus going to this group who's down in Harlan County or wherever they're at. So that's kind of where I'm at with that.
So, sorry to interrupt you, that's why we try to go to some of the local providers.
And I know you did, and I know you did.
And we've talked to them a little bit about what they need to do, they're just going to have to make that decision to do that.
Right. And now we got a position, that, now we got a position that that's a focus, you know?
They're not gonna, I mean, they're not going to, I mean, how am I gonna say this? We can't hold that over their head, though, for them to put that money back in our community. You know what I mean?
No, no, that's not what I'm, that's not what I'm saying. So what I'm saying is, so if we get a local provider, if there's somebody interested locally, I would much rather do business with somebody locally than do somebody outside of the county, if that makes sense.
That's what I'm talking about, if we go with whoever, whomever, Cumberland.
And they may be the only ones in the year, I mean, you know, they, you all, you know, may reach out to all the providers, and they may start to say, you know what, we don't want to do this, we don't want to be part of this because of, you know, the hoops that we have to go through in order to do the billing that needs to be done. You know, and so then, you know, we're limited on what we do. I just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence, and that we are, you know, crossing every T, dotting every I's, and giving those opportunities inside our community versus outside our, if that makes sense.
It makes perfect sense, and I think, you know, it's something that I know that Mr. Hawkinsmith, also in several other areas that we deal with over the course of a fiscal year, a school year, also will bring to us at times and say, you know what, I would like to do it locally, but we didn't have anybody, or, I'd like to keep this locally, and in fact, it may be that it costs us just a little bit more for XYZ or whatever it is, or maybe we don't get quite as large of a return for ABC, but by keeping it locally, there's someone that we can drive across town to, or, you know, walk into their office at any given time and be able to easily talk to them about that.
I would just much rather see our local desks and our local physicians, you know, they're the ones that get the benefit, the financial benefit off of us versus somebody else who is named from here.
Well, and first and foremost, I think what we're all trying to do too, is make sure that we're providing those services to our students.
Sure, which, yes.
And I think I heard you say, which we haven't really said anything about, although it was brought up at the work session, if I remember correctly, Miss Hopper had said that staff would also be able to take advantage of these in-school medical services, so.
Your choice.
If the staff person wanted to, like you said, just like with students, it's their choice, it could be something as simple as that staff member has sprained an ankle playing dodgeball with their students.
Sinus infection.
Sinus infection, and they don't want to leave their class, they would rather be there. So, what I heard you say too, while the position you mentioned, but also I think if you're one of those possibly first tasks that we apply to Superintendent Bradley, that we're gonna be looking for you over the course of this upcoming school year, to keep an eye on it, to work with whoever you assign to kind of be the person that oversees that, to be able to then come back to us.
Age the impacts, that kind of thing.
And it might even be good, maybe to have a six-month, just a quick update, how are things going, and then at the end, as we get closer into that nine-month timeframe, as we start reevaluating for the next year worth of contract, whether this or some other entity, then at that point, we could get a little bit more in-depth into the overall impact.
And it is year to year, so at the end of that year, we have the option to say, you know, nope, we're done.
Yeah, there are several ways to exit the contract even during the year.
Okay, I like that, yeah.
Particularly if it's a one-year contract, during each other year.
So, do we have any other questions or discussion? Okay, so then, I would need a motion to approve this contract with the Cumberland Family Medical Center for the upcoming fiscal year. I assume that it would go into effect July 1st, 2018, going through June 30th of 2019.
That's correct.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Breeding.
Second it.
Second by Ms. Dye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Leders, appreciate your hard work on that. Moving into 7B, the tentative budget, Mr. Hawkinsmith.
Well, my laser pointer tonight, my batteries are dead, so we're gonna have to dig that in. I'm sorry, but I was really looking forward to showing it off. This does not look like our tentative budget, does it? What that looks like is a document you have seen recently, though, that's a page directly out of Mr. Bradley's edition blueprint for the district that I know board members have seen, the people throughout the community have seen, it's been shared with staff at school level as well as the central office, and I want to go through, just real quickly, a couple of pages from that document to try to tie together what we're doing in the finance office and in the district level, especially as this relates to financing, tonight budgeting. On this page, and again, if I had my laser pointer, I pointed at it, if you look at, on this particular page, if you look at Put People First, we talked about transparency there, I will tell you that on the 15th day, he began his work here May 1st, on day 15, we're already beginning to integrate changes through different platforms and with greater transparency as we prepare for next month's salary booklet. You all, if you've been on the board for a while, you know in June, the next few months are busy when it comes to, really, from May through September. Every month, we've got some big items on there. Next month, we'll bring to you a salary book, and that salary book will be put together with the greater transparency than I can remember in my 20 years as a result of some of those tools. Innovate and Grow, we talked at the work session about an item we've been discussing here for some time, and we've gradually been integrating Chromebooks in our district educational plan for our students over the last seven years. Hopefully, tonight, you'll approve a budget that includes the beginning of a one-to-one initiative for our students throughout the school district, third, sixth, and ninth graders. Reimagined Possibility, some of you have been around long enough to remember when we did a finance forum. Mr. Jackie, maybe you attended that, maybe Ms. Berry, Ms. Berry's been around for a while. We used to do annually in April a finance forum, we would bring in community members, magistrates, city commissioners, just interested folks from the community, and we would sit in this room, have lunch, and talk about the district's budget and finance. We haven't done it for a number of years, and the reason for that is we had the same folks every year, and the material didn't change fast enough for it to be super interesting for them after four or five years, so that sort of went away. I think this would be a good year to bring that back with some of these changes that certainly were undertaken here in the district. If you'll flip to the next slide, Carl, this is a timeline. You know, I just said the five months, May through September, I think they hope it's five months. In May, you see it circled there, we're approving tonight our tentative budget. In June, as we go around the wheel there, we're gonna be bringing to you next month salary schedules. In July, we're gonna bring in AFR approval. When we get to August, there's probably a 50/50 chance we'll approve tax rates in August. If not in August, we'll approve that in September. If we go back the other direction, a big driving piece of the budget that we're asking you to approve tonight, in March, we sent out site-based allocation to our schools. You know, if you've been around a while, you've heard us say 80 to 85% of most districts' budgets are staff, most of that goes out through that site-based allocation process that began in March. Carl, if you'll go to the next page. We talk about process improvement here. One of the things we're beginning to do, having conversations throughout the district, throughout every department that I'm aware of, improving our processes. We've tried that in the past, and we've had some success, but I think what's happened in the past is things have withered on the vine, we get busy. I think with this document and Mr. Bradley's leadership, we'll have the opportunity to stay laser-focused on process improvement, I'm very excited about that for the future of the district. Providing a remarkable education experience, one of the things we've talked about over the last several months is our enrollment declines. I think that's gonna turn, I expect that to start going the other direction, because we're gonna be providing a remarkable education experience here in Nelson County, and there are certainly benefits to the budget when we start to grow versus declining. Investing in efficient systems, we've talked many times, very proud of the fact that our district is one of the most energy-efficient in the state of Kentucky. Our hope this year is when the fiscal 18 data comes out, we will be number one, that's our goal, we're number three. And we want to be efficient in other things we do as well. Carl, if you'll go to the next slide, and here we just have, you know, a breakdown of the 2017, 2018 budget, and what you're gonna see in the 18, 19 budget, if you were to do a comparison, it's gonna be very similar. You know, one of the things, one of the questions I, when I look at the Nelson County Pride area of that slide, and I wrote down earlier today, how does this benefit our customers? And when I think about what you just approved, which is reflected in this budget, you just approved a contract for nursing services, or for services in Cumberland Family Health for our district, that's gonna, number one, provide over $100,000 in relief for those nursing salaries in our district. It's gonna provide access to nurse practitioners for families. I've had, I have 20-year-old and 18-year-old now, but I remember what it's like when you've got a little bitty kid, and you need to get him to the doctor, you gotta take off. It's, this is hopefully a huge benefit, huge convenience piece for our families. I do believe that's a serious customer service piece that you all approved tonight, and the good news is, it's not costing us anything, it's actually helping our bottom line. So I commend you for that decision. Inspire Learners, back to the Chromebook piece that is a part of the budget tonight, and shared leadership. Next month, in addition to salaries, I think we'll be discussing with you, I think we've talked about this before, but we'll be bringing back to you a conversation about Little League Basketball. That doesn't have anything to do with the budget, but it does have to do with kids, and it's a big part of this community. And it's a partnership that we're gonna be talking to you about next month with Nelson County Fiscal Court and the Recreation Department of the county, and their interest in helping us continue that and guarantee its viability for the next 20 years. What we have now is a system of volunteers, and those people work really hard to continue to operate that program. Next month, we hope to have a partnership to present to you, again, involving County Fiscal Court and the County Reg Department, where the district and the county work together to make sure that is available to young people, fourth, fifth, and sixth graders for as far as we can see. So that's, that I think ties very well back into the shared leadership and partnering with other folks in the community. Last couple of slides, and we're gonna try this, Carl, I practiced this earlier today, we're gonna see if it works, we've got some discussion points that I'm gonna, we're gonna look at the point. We've got some discussion points that I'm gonna, we're gonna look at the point, and we're gonna go to the actual budget. I get caught up here. There we go. The first point here is beginning balance drop. We've talked about that, I think, a number of times, if you'll pop up the budget. We had declining enrollment, we've been talking about that for a number of, very top line, far right. You see that we're projecting to begin fiscal 19 with $1.8 million, which is a drop from what we began this year with. That's not, not a surprise, we've been talking about that, we do expect that to start to correct itself in the fiscal 19 budget. Let's go back to the other slide, Carla. 4% tax rate, we're gonna be recommending that when we get to that August or September, and that is reflected back in the budget, we'll go back to it. It's the next highlighted field that you see there, we're estimating that will be tax receipts based on a 4% tax rate. We'll go back to the other document, and we'll look at SEAC. We're looking at, we're estimating a SEAC decrease of about $800,000 in fiscal 19. And if we'll go back to the tentative budget and scroll to the next highlighted field, it'll be on the next page. And there it is. And we've talked about that a number of times, and actually, that number would have been worse, but you might recall, these legislature did increase the SEAC base ever so slightly, which helped us just a little bit there. We'll go back to the listing. Decreased salary cost, we are estimating, very confident in this number, looked at it very closely, decreased salary costs next year, because this year, we were based on prior estimated enrollments, which didn't pan out. We didn't cut our staffing formula, we talked about that in January, that when we staff our schools, for the number of students that are actually there, that results in fewer positions. So we're seeing a savings there in salary cost in our budget, and Carla has found it there.
Real quick on that one.
Yeah.
So while I see, and I want to make sure I'm saying this right, while I see the Fund 0100 there, the salaries personnel services going down from current year, I see O200 employee benefits going up, is that related to the increase in CERS?
Yes.
And other pension payments that are being pushed down to school districts?
It is. CERS, and that would have been much worse, we talked about this at the work session, that would have been much worse. You also affected January 1, 2019, the teachers hired in the new pension system, the school district's responsible for an additional 2% over and above what we're paying now. So there's obviously not much money associated with that, we're not gonna hire a tremendous number of teachers in January of 2019. We'll hire a handful, but going forward, you will have to account for that. I will remind you, I think it's back on the other slide, but let's see, it's the next bullet point, I forgot. Those salary totals do reflect, I know there was extensive conversation, and I think it was August of 2017, about the approval of an SRO position, these salary totals do reflect that, and this summer, we do expect to post a position and get an SRO on board over the next few weeks. We're working through that as we speak now. Those salary totals do reflect that. And then you took me right to my next bullet point, an increased benefit cost, and that's directly due to the CERS matching increase.
Sorry.
Which will, that's all right, which will go up every year for the next several years. Hopefully, it'll eventually plateau. And if we'll go back to the other list now, Carla, let's see, scroll down, decreased cost of nurses, just approve that, okay? You'll look at the next highlighted field there, and I know it's kind of an eye test, but it's about $100,000 savings as a result of what you all just did. If you hadn't approved that, I would have had to have gone back to this budget, increased that by $100,000, and taken that out of contingency. We'll go back to the other list, I think we're on to our last page. Okay. Cost associated with the Chromebook one-to-one initiative, and one of the things, after the work session, I went back and looked at the draft budget, I knew we talked about it, but I know there's a lot that's gone off, especially for board members over the last few months. It was included in the draft budget back in January, but you can see that about $300,000 is allocated for that Chromebook initiative, and that is reflected there in the center of that page, in the far right column. Decreased transportation cost, we've had a couple of bus routes consolidated, no one was laid off, as route, as numbers allowed and retirements allowed, the guys were able to consolidate a couple of bus routes, and that's reflected there at the bottom of that page. And contingency of $2 million, which is an, if you go back, if you remember the beginning balance, was 1.8 million. The contingency in this budget reflects $2 million, which is an increase during fiscal 19 of $200,000. Now, as we all know, a lot can change between now and this time next year. We can have the state tell us, sorry, you're not gonna get as much as we promised you. You can have something happen in a building. Things can happen, but as it stands now, we're projecting an increase in contingency, you see that number there. And I think, our last item that I wanted to highlight for you, I think this is something that you all are interested in. We've got an unobligated capital fund balance, which is cash that is accumulating for projects down the line in fiscal 19, as it stands now, a little over $436,000, and that's reflected back at several pages into the budget. And there it is. And that's, those are unobligated funds as we head into fiscal 19. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you might have about the budget.
The, of course, we have the draw, or the proposed projected draw in the contingency to start the year, and you kind of referenced something about the unexpected things that happened during the year. I assume some of that may be related to, we had some unexpected work at Cox's Creek.
Correct.
And that's probably where some of that drop was. Whenever, the line item where you were talking about projected property taxes based upon the assessment, so, do you, and I know that the finalized property evaluations are not made yet, but I did also just read a article over at Fiscal Court meeting. Ms. Tishner of PVA gave a presentation, talked a little bit about that there are parts of the county that possibly property had not been valued, assessed in a decade, and that there are some property values that have been reassessed and going up quite a bit. I know that there's opportunities that people can actually file appeals, and maybe they might get adjusted, could be down, could stay the same, they could be adjusted up, who knows? Is there the potential that that number that you showed us that was highlighted could either go up or down based upon some of that?
Absolutely, it absolutely won't be exactly that, it could be a little less or a little more, and then when we get certified rates in August, sometimes we collect less than is certified because of folks disputing their assessments. Now, what happens then, again, some of you have been around a while and remember, maybe all of you, remember that a part of the levy process is an exoneration rate. Well, that is to collect prior year exonerations, so if people dispute their tax assessment this year, the amount of those exonerations go into the calculation for the exoneration rate the following year, which allows the district to recoup it. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So that's, so that, we get it a year later, so this year, we're gonna collect exoneration rate based on exonerations from last year. Does that make sense?
It does.
We don't know what that is.
Don't know what it is yet.
And something else, too, I mean, a lot of times, I mean, we hear, the public hears, the average person hears, 4%, 4%, 4%. And I think a lot of time, it's that misnumber of, well, they said they're taking the 4%. That means our taxes are going up 4%, so if I had a $1,000 school portion of the tax bill, you know, whatever, let me make the math easier on me, if I had a $100 portion of the, of my tax bill being school taxes, that means it goes up four bucks. That's what typically thinks, but 4% doesn't necessarily equate to a 4% change in the tax rate, it's a 4% change in the overall amount of revenue that can come in.
Correct.
And mathematically, it could be that if there are some of these assessments in the community, or that have not been revalued in a decade, and maybe they've gone up in value, housing market has started to rebound quite a bit, more building going on, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, mathematically, there's the potential that even if we were to take the 4% revenue increase, that the tax rate could go up a little, could stay the same, or mathematically, there's even been some instances where the tax rate has gone down.
Absolutely, it's happened here. Not that 15 years ago, it happened routinely, because the assessment was growing so fast, and at some point, that's gonna come back, that's gonna happen again. I don't know if this is the year, you know, but at some point, that will happen again. So it's the revenue that can increase by 4%, and the calculation has got some quirks in it, but generally, that's the, that's the plan for the revenue to be increased by that amount.
And the only reason that I bring this up, because, and I, I'll attribute this to my mom, I had conversations with her at times, and she'll ask me questions, and I'll give her an answer, and she'll go, well, I didn't understand it, you know, maybe people don't understand it. So that's why I'm kind of going through this process of talking it through. I mean, we've got a lot of industry that has started to move into the community. Typically, as industry moves in, and jobs move in, families move in, housing is needed, some of the things that I know that we're trying to do with our school district and our emphasis, whether it's the career readiness piece, college readiness, that whole child piece, you know, this NC Pride piece, and I know Mr. Bradley is really helping us push as a school district, you know, that causes people to say, hey, we want to be in that school district. If there are people saying, hey, we want to be in that school district, then potentially, we're producing valuable members of the workforce in the community, which then means industry is wanting to move into that community, and it gets into a cycle, you know, perpetual machine almost cycle, where education can be that economic driver for the community. If you've got a strong educational system, you've got people that want to be part of that community. If you have a weaker educational system, people leave that community. And we see that in some parts of the state already, where the school districts maybe are not potentially doing all that great of a job, and so people are leaving out of that community. Plus, jobs are leaving out of that community, it gets into the negative form of that cycle. So, you know, I bring this up just so that we can all continue to think about it from that perspective, you know, costs continue to go up, there's continued to be more expenses being put on the local school district, some of them that we, and I'll use your phrase, Mr. Hawkinsmith, that we get nothing for. Now, other than solid pension, I'll throw that one in there, because I know you always like to make sure that we point that out, but that whenever we put funds in, those increased levels of funding into the pension systems, it's not additional teacher, it's not another school bus, it's not another classroom in Chromebooks, it's money going into a system that there's no tangible piece that as a community, we get back out of, other than we know we've got a solid pension system.
Hey, one, I'll add one thing real quick.
Okay.
We're looking at increasing revenue in tax, but that just about is offset entirely by your reduction in SEAC. So the two big pieces of revenue just about balance to zero. And when it's all said and done next year, they're gonna come close to balancing to zero. Very little new, net new revenue for the fiscal year.
One more question, that, what would be, I know that there is a legal requirement whenever it comes to our contingency fund, every school district has a legal requirement, and that percentage is?
2% in this budget.
And based upon that, looking at what the projected contingency would be, what would be our contingency percentage-wise revenue?
Three, about three and a half.
Okay. Which I think the Department of Education in Frankfurt suggests five, is it? But, you know, and sometimes we try to be very efficient with the public's money, and you know, we don't want to be sitting on a 10, 15, 20% contingency, unless the public knows that it's for a purpose within the community, that's not just sitting in a camp. Again, I say that not to mean that we got that, but just to say that, you know, we try to be very efficient with.
When we ended fiscal 17 right about where we want to be, we want to get back to that, what our goals is to get back to that level.
And I apologize to other board members, I get into the number piece of it, being an old math teacher, I enjoy the numbers.
No, it's good, it's great information.
So, do we have other questions for Mr. Hawkinsmith? Okay, so then, Mr. Hawkinsmith, you would need a motion to approve this tentative budget.
Yes, sir.
For fiscal year 2018, 2019.
That's correct.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Berry.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dickerson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Hawkinsmith, I read something in the paper just this past week. How many years have you been with the Nelson County Schools?
20 years, last two.
That's what I read, 20 years ago in the standard, and I had forgotten that you came from the financial part of the Department of Education.
Yes, sir.
And I just want to say that while I've only worked directly with you the 10 years on the board, I think we're pretty lucky as a school district, as well as as a community, to have someone like Mr. Hawkinsmith working on our behalf here, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So it's still Mr. Hawkinsmith Show here, I am 7C, Insurance Selection.
I'm gonna try to talk a little faster, I said, I think I told the folks I was gonna talk fast, I don't think I'm doing a good job of that, so here we go. Insurance, we talked about, if you'll flip that, Carla, so folks can see, I'm sorry I sent it to her like that, the, insurance is a big line item in our budget, we're asking tonight that you renew with your existing three carriers and agents for property liability and fleet. Where with the First Insurance Group is our agent, that's Kathy Clements here in town, Kathy has been our agent since before I got here, and is fantastic to work with, and we're recommending that you approve the contract for that insurance coverage with Liberty Mutual and that insurance agent. Total cost for fiscal 19 is $305,195. In addition, I'm recommending that you approve workers' compensation insurance with an agent, USI and Patrick Conway, through Carrier Akimi. Fiscal 2018, we talked about this a little during the work session last week, the premium last year was 120,000, just under 121,000, and that's dropping 15 and a half percent due to our excellent mod factor and good work on the part of the staff, so that's exciting to be able to recommend that we're gonna save almost $20,000 in our workers' comp insurance going forward. And I'm also recommending tonight that you stay with USI and Patrick Conway, also for our student accident coverage. That premium is staying exactly where it is now, and a reminder, we provide coverage for every student that is enrolled in our school district for any school-sponsored activity, football, archery, field trips, anything in between. Field Day, I've talked to Mr. Hill in the back of the room earlier, at Field Day Friday in Foster Heights, if you break your arm, we had a child several years ago, when I was there, break his arm, ended up bouncing. Well, our insurance covers that. So I'm recommending that as our insurance package for fiscal 19, and I request your approval.
Another piece, host student?
Sorry?
Another piece, focused on the host student and the health student.
Exactly.
Any questions? So we need a motion to approve the recommended insurance packages for fiscal year 18, 19.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Breeding.
Second.
Second by Ms. Berry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. 7D, bonded depository, Ms. Hawkinsmith.
Asking that you approve a year or two of our agreement with West Banko. About this time last year, we switched from PNC, where we'd been for many years, to West Banko, because we're getting a much better rate of return on our money, we are earning interest now, and I'm excited about that, and have a good relationship with those folks, they've been very good to work with this year, we're recommending that we continue that relationship.
Any questions? Okay, then we would need a motion to approve bonded depository for West Banko as the primary depository for district funds for fiscal years 2018 to 2019.
Let me ask them something before we do this.
Sure.
Mr. Hawkinsmith, how much interest do we earn a year?
Well, actually, I looked at that today, I'm gonna estimate for this fiscal year, we'll earn between $60,000 and $70,000 in interest total. I will tell you, but I was on the phone today, back up, today, yesterday, with West Banko asking about rates that have begun to pop up a little bit, if you've gone to refinance your mortgage, buy a house, or invest, rates are up, and our rate... And our rate with them has increased. I'm having conversations with them now to try to get a little more out of there. So we're working on that. That's something we never, we really don't stop doing that. So $60,000 to $70,000 in this year, I believe that's a pretty safe estimate. And last year we got, year before, last year we got a little interest because we invested in some CDs. Previous year, we had virtually nothing. So that's money going right back into the classroom.
How many CDs do we have?
We have two right now, one with Fort Knox Federal and one with multi-bank securities.
And how much are those?
The Fort Knox CD is $3 million.
And?
$100,000.
Okay. So everybody knows, there is money in the pot somewhere.
Okay, so then we need a motion to approve by Mr. Dickerson. Second by Ms. Dye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 7E, The School Facilities Construction Commission Offer of Assistance for Technology.
We have included in the tentative budget, this is obviously for fiscal '18, but we also have included in the tentative budget matching for offers just like this for next year. We are asking that you match this offer tonight. We will, if you choose to approve that, we'll submit that paperwork and probably mid-June have our $20,000, or $50,000, thank you. And it's a little over $40,000 that will go into the KES account for technology purchases that are used for staff and students.
Any questions? Motion by Ms. Berry to approve the SFCC third offer of assistance for KES.
Second.
Second by Ms. Breeding. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 7F, Athletic Training Contract Renewal, Mr. Hawkinsmith.
We talked about this again last week, and this is another local partnership that I'm proud of. You know, we work with Court. They provide our athletic trainers to our two high schools at no cost to the district. And I think if I recall, Eric is at Thomas Nelson and has been there since 2012. Cody James is at Nelson County High School and has been there since 2009. I will tell you that I did talk to folks with Court recently, the last few days, and they said it's possible we'll have a change. We're not going to request that no one get promoted because we want to keep them. You know, I'm sure if we have someone leave us, we'll get someone to replace them that are fantastic. Again, Cody at Nelson County has been there as long as a lot of the staff. And again, the person that Eric at Thomas Nelson has been there several years as well. So we're excited about that relationship. Again, that's at no cost to the taxpayer. If you're at those schools, I have, my son plays golf and tennis and, you know, they're there, their football games, they're always there. If you're out there in advance, you see them. So that's a, I think that's a very positive relationship that we've got there. I'm excited to recommend that renewal.
Questions? Okay, then we would need a motion to approve the contract with Court for athletic training services for the period of July 1, 18 through June 30, 2021.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Breeding.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving into item 7G, Federal and State Programs Financial Procedure Manual.
Again, we've talked about this a couple of times now. This was recommended by our auditor. These are things we're doing and have done for a long time. They just asked that we pull it all together in the documents. And I think I've shared with you, KSBA's policy recommendation is one sentence. Personally, I like one sentence better than 34 pages. That's just me. The auditor wanted us to go a little more, with a little more volume. And so we're recommending that you approve that tonight. Again, we're doing this now. This is not a change, we're already doing it. They just wanted us to document it in writing, have you guys approve it. So we're asking that you do that tonight.
The, I'm trying to reflect back, I know there were some things that you had mentioned, Ms. Berry, questions, and I think it had to do with making sure that superintendent was also included in the documentation, superintendent position.
Yes, anytime you have federal money, it's always to have somebody more up front that knows, that's got part of that picture.
And I think that's something that was added in there that's changed.
And it has, I've checked.
The, and I'm also trying to reflect back, because like you said, we've looked at this several times, it's been several months ago that was brought to us. This actually is also being based upon best practices in other school districts, if I remember correctly.
Simpson County.
Simpson County, yeah.
Simpson County. Again, it's a document, we modeled after a document from Simpson County, what's, but we're, this is what we do. We didn't really change what we do, we just use their document.
As a guide for how to format, put it all together.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so then we would need a motion for, to approve the Federal and State Programs Financial Procedure Manual.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Berry.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Breeding. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkinsmith. Going on into item 7H, Approval of Job Description, 7H1, Director of Community Health and Engagement, Superintendent Bradley.
Yes, so I came to you last week in the work session. Carl, if you could take a look at slide four. So we've talked a lot about allocating resources in a way that allow us to meet goals. On the back wall of our boardroom, we have a Nelson County District Mission. And as we look at that mission and thinking about inspired and prepared students in our global economy, we have to think about how we're allocating resources to achieve that. And I'm coming tonight with four job descriptions, all of which align to these elements. And if you take a look at slide five, Carl, right there. And key to that is really the foundation of it all is this idea of community health and engagement. So as we look at the community health and engagement job description, the goal is to build a community of healthy, inspired students and staff members that are connected socially and emotionally engaged. And putting a team of people under this united umbrella allows us to have a conversation that we've not necessarily been able to have as concernedly. And this role is really focused on doing just that, making sure that students and staff are connected across our community and are socially and emotionally engaged.
So I've got a question, and I don't know whether it's for you, Mr. Bradley, or whether it's for Ms. Breeding. So I'm thinking back to the conversation we had a little bit ago about the Cumberland Family Medical Center. I think I used the right name there. And you had talked about the, during this first year since their year-to-year contracts, that what's your expectation, I think all of our expectations would be assessing the effectiveness of it, assessing the impact it has on our student, staff, as well as the local community. Is this what you were referring to as far as having someone in that, in your eyes, could possibly be that person that is assessing and kind of overseeing that?
Absolutely.
And then I would assume, would that be kind of where that kind of work would happen is within this umbrella? I'll use your term.
So the Director of Community Health and Engagement would be working with school nurses and health services coordinators, school safety coordinator, SRO, as we refer to it, family resource youth service centers, school counselors, therapists, psychologists, and also connecting with the community resources. And also connecting that under this federal and state programming work that's going on. So.
Okay. Other questions that we've got, or comments, or discussion?
I have a question though. If somebody in our district already holds these credentials, are they, are they, can apply for, to these?
Absolutely, anybody that holds the qualifications can apply.
You need these for?
Absolutely.
And jobs.
Do we approve these one at a time or each one independently?
I think we should approve them one at a time.
One at a time.
Yes. One at a time.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
I'll put it through.
Okay. So then we've got a motion by Ms. Dye to approve the job description for the Director of Community Health and Engagement.
And I will second.
We got a second by Ms. Breeding. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. So now moving on to 7H2, Director of Workforce Development.
Carl, same, if we go back to slide, to page four, there we are. So a big part of our work, as we know as a board, is thinking about how we're preparing students for transition beyond high school. And we have a number of pockets for career readiness going on currently in our district. And this role, the Director of Workforce Development, unites resources under this common umbrella. And one of the goals that I've set out as superintendent is to ensure that every kid in our school district, by the time they graduate, has real-time work experiences. And they're experiencing those real-time experiences and skill building in the context of school and beyond the school building. In order to do that, we have to also allocate resources that demand, that it demands. So the Director of Workforce Development will be working very closely with schools and our community to ensure that every student has an opportunity to engage in real-time work experiences while at school.
Okay, this is a, as I read this or think, this is like, this is what we do already. Amber.
Yep, so Amber would be underneath of that? She would be a College and Career Readiness Coordinator?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. So that is an Amber.
But it's related to the work that she's doing.
Exactly.
Some of the work that she's doing. I keep looking down at you, Ms. Breeding.
Yeah, no, I'm excited about this because, I mean, this is a huge focus and this is a huge thing, you know, for our district and our district needs this. I think our community needs this. And we need that one person, you know, that the community can connect with and they can connect with that community to create these opportunities for these kids to get them work ready, so.
Well, it's that laser-focused piece. I think that I heard Mr. Hawkinsmith use that phrasing whenever he was talking about the budgeting piece, as being very laser-focused on the work that we're doing. The, you know, looking, thinking back to, and I, Miss Noll had, or it wasn't Miss Noll, but some of the STLP coordinators at the school, and there was the one student who, if we were to call Bartstown Internet, Bartstown Cable.
Okay, yeah.
Right now, that he might be the one that we're talking to, yet he's a junior in our school system. It's that type of work that we're talking about, is trying to find what students' passions are, what our community needs from a workforce standing and put those two together.
And it's preparing them to.
Yes, yes.
Yes, and because, I mean, it's such a huge thing, I think, I mean, I think it's perfect to have this leadership position in our district to kind of guide in and focus on that specific way.
Well, she was, Amber was successful in that, out to Nelson County when they had that work job that fair.
Oh, she rocked it.
There was two students, yes, there were.
She rocked it.
Enough about how she's handled things. There was even two jobs offered to seniors out there that very day. So I'm very proud of what we've got going on.
Great. And this is just going to take it to the next level.
She's done a wonderful job, yes, I think she's done a great job.
And this will take it to the next level.
Yes.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve this job description as of right.
So a motion by Ms. Breeding to approve the job description for Director of Workforce Development.
Nelson.
Second by Mr. Dickerson. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to 7H3, Director of Student Leadership and Learning.
This position really changes the conversation about the purpose of school. As we think about, some districts may have previously referred to it, Chief Academic Officer, I really put in here all the academics under one umbrella. This role is similar to that in that it is looking at curriculum, but it's also looking at opportunities for student leadership. So in addition to thinking about how we're creating spaces for inspired learning in our schools from a P-12 concept, it also says that student leadership and opportunity is a purpose, is one of the purposes of school. And with that, the athletic work also goes under this avenue, as well as student organizations. Maybe working very closely with principals across the district to ensure that we have a clear vision for what it means to lead and learn in our schools for students.
So as a concrete example, STLP, Student Technology Leadership Program.
Absolutely.
That work would be part of what the Director of Student Leadership and Learning helps continue to thrive and grow. While they may not be the ones specifically down boot on the ground, they're assisting, they're supporting those efforts.
Yes. I think if they've done their job well, they'll be, they'll be on the ground with them too, especially in those first few years.
Okay.
I love this, I think it's great.
I do too.
Yeah, more than I could have asked for.
So then we would need a motion to approve the job description for the Director of Student Leadership and Learning.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Dye.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Breeding. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And item 7H4, Job Description for Community and School Media Coordinator.
Carl, if you could go to slide 16, please. So one of the conversations we've been having is around communications and how we continue to build energy in our community and the way that we think about building Nelson County pride. A big part of that is the way we allocate time and energy on our communication mediums. Those communication mediums have evolved. And the reality for parents and students is that social media, social media and videography are really the primary components of the work that we do. The goal of this role is not only to create that energy at the district level, but to work closely with schools to build their capacity to use social media effectively to tell their own story. This role is intended to help the district unify a story, as well as schools unite behind a common story. There is, there are major components in videography and the work that's going on in developing things like we saw today, was really a video in, very much in its infancy. This is something that we would develop across time that would be utilized by many people at many levels. What are the underlings, if you will, that this position would encompass? There really are, there are none. So this position is, would be part of the communications team along with myself and Ms. McKay, and we would be working closely with technology to make sure that we had supports in place and maybe working with the principals at the table, especially as you think about principals that are working to develop their storyline at their schools.
This purpose is fit our marketing need.
Absolutely, this is essentially.
That, I was making sure that I was reading this right, can you make sure? Because that was something that was very important to me, that I wanted to be a school of choice to get dinner off the back of, we have to do this.
The.
Yeah, we had to better, make a better model.
Yeah, I mean, it's what it is.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and let me ask you this, and I'm going to put Casey on the spot. So I reflect back on, it was sometime, I don't know, in the last year and a half or so, I think after one of our work sessions, that you made a comment to me about trying to be able to have better interaction, better access to, and I'll use your phrase, Mr. Bradley, that the storyline, the activities that are happening, the good stories that are happening within our school district. And you made a comment that sometimes it seems like you get maybe a contact from a coach, a principal or someone, but it's, oh, in 10 minutes, can you be there in 10 minutes? Do you remember that conversation? And so my question here, so thinking about, you know, whether it's Casey with Kentucky Stand or Jim with the Gazette or, you know, whomever, whatever media outlet it might be here, Sylvia with the local radio station. This person here would be making those relationships with those community members as well to be able to help get that storyline or to be able to get information in front of them in time that where they can also participate.
Yes, absolutely. And also, one thing I left out is this, this role would also have a big part in web design, the way we use the, our websites.
Any other questions or comments on this one? So then we would need a motion to approve the job description for Community and School Media Coordinator. Motion by Mr. Dickerson.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Dye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. One thing that I would ask, I know Mr. Bradley adds, we're starting to rethink how we provide and dedicate our resources to our students. I'll still personally reflect back, at the work session, there was a document that you shared with us that was part of that vision. shared with us, that was part of that vision for the Nelson County Schools, that told about what, what are the types of services that each of these four director or areas would work on. I think that would be something that would be key, that people within the community being able to see also, so that they can be able to connect those dots.
Yeah, so Carl, slide nine.
Yeah, that one right there. And, you know, that might be one of those that, as we continue to talk about, to promote, to focus, refocus our resources, that we make sure that we also have, because that, to me, I will say, to me, that helped me in my head start to wrap my mind around how we can refocus our, our student services in these four strands here, so.
Well, I think it, I think it's more meaningful. I mean, I do, I think it's more purposeful, I think it's meaningful, and I think it gives it a very specific, I think, kind of direction of, yeah.
So, so then the, the last question on those, so process would be, we've approved these job descriptions, jobs will be posted. Is it thirty-day window?
Fifteen days.
Fifteen-day window, okay. And so that would mean possibly by early June, we might be seeing these efforts start to, start to grow and start to work on their roles.
Yes.
Okay. Good deal, thank you. Moving into item eight, student and shareholder engagement, eight A, guest comments, the board guest comment policy. Any person wishing to address the board may do so by following these rules. Individuals representing themselves are limited to three minutes. Individuals representing a group are limited to five minutes. Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address, and if you represent a group, state the name of the group you are representing. Okay, then I would need a motion to adjourn regular session.
Motion?
Motion by Ms. Breeding.
Second.
Second by Ms. Berry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes. Thank you all. Good work there.